Dr. Hall, I've made you a co-host.
Mayor's delayed for a couple of minutes. But there's with the link, so we'll make sure we present him the link.
Yes, I just did.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Jeffrey, if you could also resend it to Mary Sheehan, they're together, so.
Yes, I just did.
Well, appreciate it.
We seem to be in. Is everybody in? All right, sorry for the delay, we're having trouble getting in. We're all set, Mary.
Is everyone in?
It looks like, yeah. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Howie? Neil Lahey?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Mr. Dylan? Mr. Doherty?
Here.
Here.
Devin present.
Okay, special order of business, members of the public may view the meeting via LTC and those which speak regarding specific agenda items shall register in advance uh on meeting, on the meeting item by sending an email to the superintendent's office indicating the agenda item. Uh, we're doing Zoom for next meeting or two because chambers. So that brings us to four. Uh, motion to approve the regular scheduled and special meeting minutes of the role school committee of February third, twenty twenty-one and place them on file by Mr. Dakota and seconded by Ms. Clark. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, the permission to enter, there's just one of them, it's in your packet. Recommendations approval is written, staffs available, any questions?
Move to approve.
Second. I just have a question, if I could.
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Doherty.
I know Ms. Doherty was second, who was first? I can't think.
Yeah, I mean, uh, Mr. Connie. Hey, Connie. Are you all set, Connie? No, who had a question?
I had a question, Jackie. And I'm, I'm gonna support it, I just wanted to ask if you guys had looked into uh, the Lowell Health Center and Mass in Mo- in Motion Lowell, they are also offering um, health and racial equity training, I'm, and it's free. I'm actually taking advantage of it myself, there's a couple in March. So I just wanted to know if you were aware, there is this local uh, programming. And uh, I mean, I know this company's out of Virginia, I'm sure they do a fine job. Uh, but I don't know if anybody could give me some information if you, if you had looked at this, these local options for this training.
Mr. Phillips.
Um, yes, so, um, school committee member Doherty. This is a provider who has worked with our high school before. Um, so there's continuity in that sense. Um, and so that was, that was important. Um, to have someone who had already had an understanding, especially because we just have a couple of months left in this school year.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, any other? Okay, uh, roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Neil Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dylan?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, motions, uh, motion by Ms. Doherty. Uh, motion by Jackie Gardy reconsider approval of the permission to enter for two hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-two RCM health services pending more information regarding the efforts to fill the open position. Seconded by Mr. Howie. Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Rhonda, I'm really just looking to see if um the um, the administration has got more of an update, I did have some reservations, as I know my colleague did about such a, a big contract to a consulting firm in New York uh, for speech language services for our kids. And when I called the next day, there wasn't, I didn't get a lot of reassurance that we had made the best effort to fill the, at least the two open positions, so I'm wondering if the administration has an update in terms of what's been done to fill the two open um, SLP positions and when were the postings updated, was there advertising, just kind of a synopsis of the effort to fill those open roles, because I know we do absolutely need uh, those people, thank you.
Dr. Hall?
Yeah. Uh, sure, um, Ms. Doherty, I couldn't find any evidence of advertising. Um, I know you just asked that, I did find um, postings and I have refreshed um, the postings as well. Uh, there were um, seven hundred and thirty-eight views on the occupational therapist assistant posting uh, that was um, refreshed in December. Uh, so we have had a lot of people look at that. Um, I saw that there were approximately ten people that applied, I didn't personally interview uh, any of them, uh, so I'm concluding that um, those candidates, I didn't have the necessary criteria, although I don't have any personal knowledge of that. There also was another uh, posting for uh, speech language pathologist assistant that I saw was refreshed on November tenth uh, two thousand twenty, and that was on School Stream. The occupational therapist assistant uh, was on um, School Spring. Uh, we also now have um, the job on um, Indeed for speech language uh, pathologist and of course, we'll continue to try to get um, permanent people for these positions, uh, but before the motion was also brought to you, I was told that all the retirees were reached out who normally um, fill in these short time uh, positions and that wasn't successful and what we were faced with uh, is a long time um, substitute position where someone might be in there a month or two or three and won't have any uh, long-term employment. Uh, so they may be pursuing other long-term jobs when others are available in this field, I could see on Indeed, there were a bunch of um private companies offering, you know, anywhere from uh, forty to fifty dollars an hour up to eighty-two thousand a year with openings right now in the Lowell area. Uh, so what I can say is we'll continue to try to um, fill these um, positions with um, permanent unionized uh, people, but right now, if you went in a job you'd only be guaranteed employment till June thirtieth, so that kind of puts us at a competitive advantage. If we did hire someone uh, for a few months, we'd also have to pay them unemployment uh, likely if they weren't rehired uh, for the, for the next year, so. Um, in gist, we've um, re-emphasized these jobs on uh, the three portals through different uh, degrees and we're continuing to try to hire permanent unionized um, personnel, which I know the committee uh, favors, um, but for the short term, I think it would be beneficial uh, to use the contracting company to get the services, I would, although we'll continue to try to hire uh, permanent people going forward. I don't know if that answered all the questions, but. Ms. Doherty?
Well, I, just as a follow-up, I'm, I'm wondering if would advertising help and why would they only be three-month positions if they're permanent positions? We have open roles that we're trying to fill. So I'm not sure why it would only be a temporary position. Uh, they're gonna, we're gonna need them next school year as well.
Sure, when we hire them, typically um, in the middle of the school year, they don't uh, gain permanency. So another speech language pathologist under the compendium process would be able to bid into um, that position for a transfer. So that's one of the limitations that we face. And additionally, if it's a, a fill-in for a maternity, then the uh, the position would go away too.
Right, I understood that there were two that were permanent open positions though. There are two that are, that are on leave and two that were permanent position, I mean, I'm just looking at, not only is it a lot of money but we're sending, we're having these remote consultants who are not part of our community. Uh, even our speech language pathologists who are working remotely now. These are our kids, they're their kids, you know what I mean, I don't know that our, that a remote consultant is gonna provide you know, the kind of care that we want for our, our students, whether it's, and obviously it's only gonna be remote. It's not gonna be in person. So I, I, I still have concerns about that, I, I don't.
Ms. Doherty, there's, we're, we all would have those concerns, this doesn't take the place of the postings. The postings remain active, these positions, this money also can't be used to hire even more positions, this is non-recurring dollars that are accumulated due to these vacancies, so the only thing you're working to do here as a committee is a stopgap in services while these vacancies exist, so that we can provide the services to which our children are legally entitled. So the positions will continue to be posted, it doesn't limit any opportunity for recruitment doesn't limit even, any funding for uh, recurring positions and as soon as the positions are hired then the, the positions, the full-time positions take the place of the services that are being contracted, and these are stopgap services.
I, I, I understand that, but you're talking about, it was no advertising that we could find, right? And postings were refreshed in November and December, I just don't know that it's been a full-on effort to find the people, that's, that's my concern, I'm good. I see Mr. Howie has his hand up.
Um, well, you know, last time we met, I voted against this, but after seeing everything and listening to Jim Hall just now, I knew he was gonna say exactly that. We have speech assistants and we have people they call COTA uh, COTAs. Um, Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant. I'm not sure which one, but one of them makes around thirty thousand a year. The other one makes about forty thousand a year. And those, both of those positions are very important. Uh, I know now that we gotta get done.
You might.
If you think two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars is a lot of money it will be just a drop in the bucket if we don't get this squared away real quick with the IEPs initial IEPs. And I'm just glad that this came out like this because I've been talking about this issue for a couple of years now. And I know the superintendent and his team have their eyes open but I still want my colleagues to know, even though I voted no last time right now, tonight after what's just been said to me and I just done some more research I am gonna now vote for this. So, thank you for the time.
Anybody else?
Mayor.
Sure, Ms. Clark?
Thank you, my, my concern with this particular motion is, is just for the immediate needs that obviously our students have that need to be served. And I, I understand Ms. Doherty and Mr. Howie's concern with uh, perhaps in the effort to hire permanent replacements we might need, there might need to be more done in terms of advertising, as you mentioned, Ms. Doherty, um or, uh, so I think focus should be placed on whatever needs to be uh, done for FY twenty-two but our immediate needs are to serve our students, um, and, and I think that takes you know, that's the most important issue right now, so I would, I, I support approving this um, permission to enter because obviously the services are needed at this particular time. And perhaps additional advertising should be looked at because obviously these are competitive positions and it is not totally unheard of that school districts use outside vendors, in fact, I have worked for a vendor that provided these services and, and they employ people who provided services across Massachusetts in school districts and in hospitals and different things, I agree, it would be great to bring these in-house and, and we might have to look at how we can in fact, entice uh, employees, you know, or people potentially to be employed by us in these roles, so, but for now, I think it would be important that we, we approve this because we do need we need these services for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that?
Mr. Dylan.
Okay, yep, you're not on my screen, there you are, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just, I agree um, with Ms. Clark, I think you know, it's certainly not something that we wanna get used to, you know, used to doing, it is a large sum of money, but um, the fact is, we're understaffed right now and this work needs to get done. Um, and you know, in a conversation like this, should probably be uh, you know, involved in our upbun- upcoming budget talks because you know, that's the time when we need to address these things, um, I think, and so I, I, I agree that right now, this is something we need to do, it's unfortunate and we know where we need to, to go from here, um, and keep this involved in the talks that we're having in the coming months, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, so the maker of the motion, um, you wanna do a roll call on this, so it can move ahead, or what do you wanna do with?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, it's gonna require one of two options, just for clarity for the committee, the motion on the table right now is to reconsider your past vote. You can choose to uphold the reconsideration and then vote a second time to uphold it. Um, Mr. Mayor, that's the motion on the table right now, so an affirmative in the motion right now, with, to which there is a second would be to reconsider the vote. That would then necessitate a second vote to make sure that we can, we uphold the permission to enter. That likely would be the cleanest way, so, because this is one of those challenges where the motion can get confusing as to whether you wanna vote no or yes. Um, so I just bring that to the committee's attention.
I could also just withdraw the motion, it doesn't seem like there is support for reconsideration. I, I just hope the administration has heard, uh, you know the concerns about doing the, the, going the extra mile that we need to do to try to fill those positions. So I would reconsider, I would uh, remove my motion, I forget the word now.
Yeah, withdraw the motion.
Withdraw, sorry.
That's even cleaner.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you. I don't know if I could just add, Mayor, it just seems like the committee is on the same page on this, that we should attempt to uh, hire permanent unionized um, employees and you know, fill the gap uh, right now, so I think Ms. Doherty's point about advertising I would like uh, to do that, to see if we could spur in some candidates, we don't often do paid advertising, but this is probably one that we could um, submit the expense and uh.
What do you mean by paid advertising?
Well, indeed, for example, uh, and we had to do this in the, in August to hire a lot of people very quickly, you can spread out a blast over the internet to draw candidates uh, to your job, so it sounds like the committee, uh, from what I'm hearing uh, wants to put some emphasis on, um. All right, well, why don't I just, let me just think it up for a second, um, so we withdraw the motion so the posting stays. So, um, you heard what we want, just you know, we're not gonna interfere with your job, so you should try to fill those positions, so we'll just let you do your job. I appreciate the feedback. Sounds good. All right, thank you. Um, subcommittee. Equity and Access, uh, Subcommittee Report Approval for the Minutes of the Wednesday, February second meeting. Um, did you need to speak on this, Jackie, or are we just approving it?
I'm, I'm trying to unmute myself, I apologize. I don't need to speak on it unless people want to, we did meet uh, Tuesday, February second. Uh, you have the minutes there, I know we've got a lot to cover today, but I'm open to whatever you guys wanna do.
Good, Mr.? Meeting after that, or is this the second meeting or the first meeting?
This is the second meeting, so we, you will see tonight, we have a, a, to vote on a change some changes in the kind of, the um, preschool admission and lottery piece, and so this was some of the work that was done in preparation for that.
Right, and why don't you just give a quick overview and then we'll prove the minute.
Okay, so we met, we had, uh, I was, as the chair, Ms. Clark, Mr. Howie were there. Uh, we had Mayor Lakey, Mike Dillon, Connie Martin, and from the school department Ms. Phillips, Dr. Duda, and Mr. Dakota, we talked about we looked at the whole, the way we've been assigning kids all along, right, we, we're under this desegregation consent, voluntary desegregation, and we're meeting those requirements, right, we have fifteen elementary schools in two zones, we have uh, citywide uh, schools in both of the zones, but in terms of really looking at equity around economic equity and the limitations on the data, for instance, the data has all our Brazilian students are identified within the white, non-Hispanic group, which we know many of our Brazilian students do not speak English as a first language, so there's some difficulty with the data and being able to make decisions um, regarding that. So we're looking to get equity and racial balance and economic balance, um. I'm looking to see if there's anything else, I don't know if um Ms. Phillips says anything she wants to add about the, the efforts, this is an ongoing thing, it's not gonna be fixed tomorrow, but we're looking at different ways of examining the data, dividing the zones of the city so that we can really achieve um, equity not just in terms of the DESEG agreement, but economic equity uh, all those factors that would go into balancing our schools a little bit better. Um, we looked at the, you know, um the whole flexibility around transportation and the timing of schools, which is often uh, the single driver for many parents, you know, if you've gotta be at work at a certain time, then you're limited to choosing schools that your children can be at school, so you can go to work, things like that, so it's a complicated issue, I, I'm gonna drop it to Ms. Phillips if she had anything to add, but uh, that's where we are in the process, we're still gathering information and looking at how we can make improvements in the zoning, uh, to achieve that equitable balance, and if there's cost savings on transportation, that's great but it's not the driving factor, the driving factor is to have equity in, in the way we um, assign our students across the city. If you had any thoughts, Ms. Phillips?
Um, no, thank you, school committee member Doherty, and as you shared, it is a complex matter that we're, that we're addressing here. Um, and, and we do want, um, you know, equitable distribution of, of students, you know, we wanna see our diversity across our schools. You know, we wanna see our diversity across our schools. And we also wanna make sure that, that students and families have access to all of the different, um, programs and opportunities across the district. So, um, you know, we are looking at diversity, equity, and, um, and inclusion in all of our schools.
Okay, anything else, uh, Mister Hoey?
Mayor, um, I just wanna say I thought the Subcommittee was awesome. I think we need another one. I think there was a lot of questions that were asked and I would like to give, you know, didn't have to have the time to explain everything we did ask that night. Uh, but there was one thing I wanted to point out. I don't wanna read them all, I'm gonna read one. Uh, it's basically, um, three different fundamental things about equity. And the last one, it says, "Engage all families with courtesy, dignity, respect, and cultural understanding." In my opinion, in the past three years, three to four years, uh, the Family Resource Center has been like Disneyland to people. I just wanna pat them all on the back in that office. I think if we all did our jobs just like they have, we wouldn't even have any problems. So I think that one's already covered. Uh, so I love this Subcommittee. I think we need more of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mister Mayor, if I could, I think it's an important opportunity with what Mister Hoey said, uh, to leverage and to ask for the committee's approval for two additional Subcommittee's next week. Uh, one regarding the fund for, of the Finance Subcommittee, which I would recommend for Monday. Uh, if that's, if that's amenable to Ms. Martin as the Finance Chair, to talk about the adjustment to the current fiscal year budget, looking at the, uh, savings that have been accrued due to, uh, COVID-19 remote learning. That's one, if that's amenable to the committee for a Monday evening Subcommittee of the Finance Subcommittee. The second would be a Facility Subcommittee that I would recommend, uh, for either the Wednesday or Thursday, whatever's amenable to the Fund, Sub, Facility Subcommittee that's chaired by Mister Hoey. That relates to some of those budget adjustments and the many needs within our facilities so that the Facility Subcommittee can look at the latest analysis from our operations staff. Uh, the Subcommittee work has been very productive. I'm glad to hear that the committee's finding that work is productive. Allows us to study individual issues prior to bringing the recommendation to the full committee. Uh, so if the committee would be kind enough to authorize those two, I'll work with the chairs to get them scheduled.
What's the Facility one again?
Uh, Facility Subcommittee within the, uh, is to look at all of the facility needs and which, which of those needs can be prioritized within this current year's budget, given the savings that have been accrued due to remote learning. So we're gonna bring back a full package of a budget adjustment that'll move through the Finance Subcommittee. There's gonna be a second layer of work, that's an analysis of the many, uh, needs within our facilities that our operations staff has conducted. So that full analysis is available. I'm recommending that the Facility Subcommittee reviews all of that analysis in a separate meeting, and the Finance Subcommittee looks at the full package of budget adjustments.
Okay, but, so what's, what's the meeting about though, again?
The Finance Subcommittee.
No, what, uh, what type of facility update?
So the facilities, there are several millions of dollars' worth of work needed within our facilities that are eligible for School Committee, uh, within net school spending, School Committee improvement, uh, meaning that the School Committee can authorize the dollars for these improvements. The operations staff has analyzed these, does believe that they can be concluded and completed within this fiscal year. So within the, within the budget adjustment recommendation that we're gonna be bringing to the Finance Subcommittee will include, uh, money that would be earmarked for longstanding facility needs. Uh, but we are recommending that that be a separate package that is analyzed by the Facility Subcommittee, given the many competing demands, you're not gonna be able to meet them all. Uh, so Dr. Hall and his team has analyzed it, has worked through a prioritized, uh, a weighted prioritized list that would need to be vetted, and that'll probably take, I would assume, a couple of hours of discussion, which is why I think it should go to a separate Subcommittee. The Finance Subcommittee will be looking at the full package of, uh, available savings within this current fiscal year. And again, the many competing need for those dollars, uh, to develop or approve or recommendation back to the full committee. So the two would be necessary. I'm recommending those two for next week. Uh, the Finance Subcommittee prior to the facilities, because one is a subset of the other in this case.
Okay, so later in the, in the meeting, we have budget transfers. Um, but you have like painting, carpeting, tiles, that's stuff we can do.
Yeah, that's the type of stuff you can do. So within net school spending, you can do any projects that are under the, uh, ceiling of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and under a, an asset investment of five thousand dollars. So the committee can't do a new room. The committee can't purchase a new boiler. The committee can't redo, redesign the HVAC systems. That relates to City Council. But you can do any projects under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for total contract, and you can do anything, any purchases that are under a five thousand dollar asset level. Uh, so those are the kind of, that kind of analysis that I called off. Even within that, uh, within that range, there's still a significant amount of needs that our schools have. So right now, you have some budget transfers within currently approved dollars. We'd be bringing back to you a full package within the budget adjustment for this fiscal year that's far more nuanced and far more complex.
Okay. Um, all right, I'm not so sure, but I'll, sure. All right, so what do we wanna do? Well, so we'll schedule the meetings for next week. There's a finance, is there a finance meeting Tuesday with the council?
No, that one would be with the council. This one would be for the School Committee's Finance Subcommittee. Uh, I'm not quite sure of what the topic of discussion is for the council. I, I haven't received that agenda item yet.
Yeah. Yep, Mister Hoey.
We, we just need a motion, right, uh, for Subcommittee right now, right? Don't we have to do that on the floor? Bring the motion up to have two Subcommittee's, one for...
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, well, let's, we'll make a motion to pull the Subcommittee's to have the meetings next week if people are available. So why don't you do that?
I, for me, Thursday would've been the better day. That's all. If, if everything...
So why don't you make a motion to pull the members to see if we can schedule the Subcommittee's for next week? Do I do that? Okay. Seconded by Mister Dillon. Okay. All right, thank you. Um... Where are we now? Need a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, report of progress. All those, um, so who's the motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mister Dakota? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, reports of Superintendent, eight-one, we have a registered speaker.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Would you like to be the speaker ahead of the reporter after?
Uh, we'll have the speaker go first.
Okay. Uh, Jeffrey, do you have the speaker set up?
Sure, Karen, would you?
The speaker, it does not appear to be in the meeting at this time.
Okay. All right, Mister Superintendent, go ahead.
Thank you. Karen, if you're watching on LTC, this would be the time to link on. If we see you come in the link, we'll, we'll, we'll let you enter the meeting. There's a, thank you, Doc, uh, thank you, uh, Mister Mayor. Dr. Hall will, uh, share with you the latest update on COVID-19, including the latest data, as well as, uh, an update on pool testing, as well as the vaccine. In addition, uh, Ms. Desmond is prepared to share with the committee how we are looking to proceed towards the April 1 expansion for the community that, uh, that's viewing. We are on schedule and on track to open for our substantially separate special education population on February 22nd. We are also on track and ready to expand that on March 1st to all students who were previously in-person learning in September and October. And we are also on track to expand further on April 1. However, April 1 will be an amendment to our original reopening plan. We will be bringing back that plan, that amendment to the committee at a future date. Ms. Desmond will give you an update as to where that planning process stands and get some guidance from the committee. Dr. Hall, if you can begin with the COVID-19 data. And, uh, Ms. Desmond, if your camera's working, you'll be up immediately following Dr. Hall.
Uh, sure, thank you, Doctor Boyd. Um, Mister Pickett, is it possible to put the presentation up?
Yes, it is.
If you got, if people aren't speaking, please make sure you mute, there's some, uh, background noise.
Can we see the presentation?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
Uh, we go to the first, next slide. So as we've been tracking, I think...
Does somebody have a radio on or something?
I think you should just mute everybody because there, there is background noise.
Yeah. Somebody's got a radio or a TV going. That's better. Thank you.
All right, so as we've been, uh, tracking, uh, since the summer, uh, here are the weekly numbers. As you can see, on February 11th, uh, the data continued to go down to where now we're at fifty-one and six point oh-one. And as you can see, that, uh, is below or approximately we, where we were in, uh, mid-November. Uh, so we do continue to make progress, uh, in that area and we continue to monitor, uh, those numbers as we go into the three percent or return to the three percent level next week. Uh, next slide, Jeffrey, please. So we continue to monitor, uh, quarantining and, uh, positives reported to us. Uh, and again, I think quarantining is a reflection on all the hard work people are doing , uh, to make it as safe as possible, uh, and quarantining is done, uh, to stop the spread, obviously. So the number of quarantines doesn't necessarily, um, mean anything bad from my perspective. It just exhibits the operational issues that we have in planning for that and getting substitutes or filling classes or having children learn remotely if they are quarantined. Next slide, please. Per the committee's request, we started tracking school by school. So here are updated numbers for this group of schools. Uh, next slide, please. There's the next group of schools. And the last group, please, Jeffrey. And next slide, uh, and we also have Transportation and Central Office. These are all available on the, uh, COVID website. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we've also, uh, looked at testing. Uh, the state, uh, is, uh, providing, um, money in order to do pool testing. We successfully launched a, uh, test, um, sample or a starter kit last week where we had, uh, six, eight groups of five to six that, um, took, um, pool testing and we, uh, overnighted them. Um, we got our results back. No one, um, was positive in those eight pools. We did have two samples that, uh, didn't have sufficient, uh, sample. Uh, so what I would say is it was very valuable, uh, to do that test run. Uh, I, for one, uh, ran one at a particular elementary school. I was, um, in and out of the school in under five minutes. So I don't think it'll be very disruptive, uh, to education. We plan on having carts where the outside, um, assistant will, you know, have a, uh, a cup to put the vial in and the Q-tips go directly in it and it's sealed. And you write down the people that were corresponding to a particular vial. It's all packaged and mailed off to get your results. And we are working to also secure the follow-up testing should a pool, uh, come back positive. So I'm just reporting and that's gone, uh, very well. Uh, it's a credit to Ms. Basti who's been working on this night and day. And, uh, we did have that call where they sent us those starter kits and there were quite a few people at Central Office too that, uh, took the test as well, which I didn't relay, but probably, uh, twenty people at Central and this, in the sped department and HR and, uh, all over the building. So it was a good exercise to learn how it was gonna work and I think it'll be great for the schools and safety. And next...
Question, Doctor Hall?
Yes.
Um, do we have consent forms out for everybody that's coming back next week and then the week after?
Uh, yes, and, uh, thanks for pointing that out. I should've, um, highlighted that, but the, um, consents have been out. We initially were gonna start the, um, testing on Monday or Tuesday, but, uh, as you are probably thinking, Mayor, we're gonna need a day or two after vacation to correlate all those and arrange the testing. We believe that it would just be too much to try to figure out who consented on Monday, uh, and the first day back in. So we convinced the third party to push it back to Wednesday, Thursday on the first week. And then the next week, when we have the twenty-five percent, we'll do it on Tuesday and Wednesday. And then when we're in a groove, we're gonna do it on Monday, Tuesday, which the Board of Health asked for. So that would give us a lot of follow-up time, uh, to follow up on any potential positive pools and to inform people. Uh, so we... We've got some good feedback and we're working around it and we think the first week will go very well.
All right, one other question. When you said you mailed out the swaps, what do you mean by that? Like, you're putting them in the mail?
Uh, it's a, it's a UPS, um, package that's, uh, I guess oriented for, um...
So they're that day or that night?
Yeah, it's an overnight, um...
Get your results the next day, the next morning?
Uh, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, yes.
Okay. All right, continue, thank you.
Sure. Uh, next slide, please. So I mentioned this, um, a few minutes ago. If you wanted to look at your, uh, particular school, this has been, uh, updated on a weekly basis. It's got, uh, all of our protocols, um, procedures, uh, what you do, uh, if you believe, um, you have symptoms or who you contact and how all the process within the schools works with COVID. And we update the numbers to, um, regularly each week as well. So if you're interested in a particular school, I'd encourage you to go to this website. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, here are the dates on the return. Um, when we're on course for meeting these, as you can see on, um, the return to the three percent was moved to this coming, uh, Monday. We're on track for that. Twenty-five percent will be returned on March 1st and then there'll be an expansion on April 1st, which you'll hear about more later. Uh, next slide. All right, so, uh, we, we've had a very productive week in regards to the vaccine. Uh, in my opinion, we had a, uh, great call, uh, this week, uh, where the Superintendent, um, spoke with, um, Lowell General Hospital. It was organized, um, by Senator Kennedy and, um, Mister White, uh, the head of, uh, Lowell General, uh, Hospital stated that as soon as the governor releases, uh, the educator shots, meaning anyone in the schools can get the shots. He was committed to setting up, um, immediate appointments for, uh, people who work for Lowell Public Schools. He wanted to relay that he's very, uh, pleased with the partnership and the importance of the school employees to the city. And he said that he would do everything he could once he got the shots and he was cleared, um, to administer those to school personnel. So that was extremely promising. Uh, he stated that it would be a lot more efficient to have everyone come to the site to get the shots instead of going out to the particular schools because they have such a large capacity, uh, to administer shots. It would be much faster going to that, uh, large vaccination site. Another, uh, great development today, we sent out a district-wide email, but, uh, if you have two comorbidities today, you could schedule an appointment at Lowell General Hospital and people are getting appointments as early as March 7th or March 8th. So if you have, um, just two out of, uh, ten potential, um, symptom or conditions, you would qualify. And, and those, some of those were overweight, um, smoking, uh, diabetes, cancer, uh, high blood pressure. So there are quite a few people that now, if you went onto the Lowell General, uh, site, you could qualify, um, for a shot. It appeared as early as March 7th and 8th. There were a lot of, uh, appointments available then. And then lastly, this week, um, we were contacted by, uh, DESI. There's a, uh, partnership with the VA and any school employee, who is a veteran, uh, will be able to get a shot, most likely next week, uh, at the VA. We've had about twenty employees respond that they were interested and, uh, all their names have been sent in, uh, to DESI and the VA is going to contact them and schedule a shot. Uh, and additionally, if you are a veteran and you're over the age of fifty, I've been told you're currently available to get a shot at the VA in Bedford right now too. So, um, in sum, it looks like there is, uh, some headway being made in regards to, uh, the vaccines. If people can get, uh, their... If people can get their first shot in March seventh or eighth, then hopefully they'll be able to get their second shot in early April. So good news on that. We're at least getting more concrete news. We're just waiting for the governor's word that educators can receive the vaccine in the second group. When that happens, Lowell General Hospital said our people can go over that day should they have the shots in hand. So great news there. Next slide, please. So we continue to work through these issues and there'll be more information later. But again, as you can see, the high school schedule does, is unique. We're getting back family survey results, analyzing staffing needs, looking at transportation and listening in regards to best handle social distancing and implementing CDC guidance. And additionally, I think there's some things on for the committee soon to review technology needs as well. Next slide, please. One of the models being looked at for April first would be for students to come in two days a week in two different groups, one on Monday, Tuesday, one on Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday not having those cohorts in the building. And then having the present three and twenty-five percent continue on with their five-day schedule. There are some other potential models that this could be used, which are being studied now, but the community will hear more about this later. But this is what a two-three hybrid model is. Next slide, please. This is basically what I just went over. So the seventy-five percent of students, I didn't talk about this. So if you're not in the twenty-five percent returning group, this hybrid model would begin on April first for that seventy-five percent who hasn't yet been in the school buildings this year. But with that, I don't have any other slides if there are any questions.
Dr. Hall was so good. He just ran through Ms. Desmond's slides, but Ms. Desmond is available for any questions about the hybrid model. Thank you, Dr. Hall. We'll call you COO/CAO now for the.
Sure, I didn't do as close to a good a job as Ms. Desmond could. So if you have any questions about that, please ask her.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, great job to Jim Holland administration because that's a lot of progress in advocating for our staff and making, making stuff happen for them vaccine-wise. So that's all, all great stuff. I would only caution that I know you had on there escorting a person over seventy-five is an option for you to get the vaccine. I don't believe all sites are going by that policy. So I would just check before. Don't count on that at all locations. And then on the hybrid stuff, I just wanted to mention, you know, to our staff, we never intended on implementing any type of hybrid scenario where you are teaching both models at the same time. Am I on?
Yeah.
You know, that's been a consideration of ours from the start, that we don't want teachers teaching both styles simultaneously and understand that that is extremely challenging. And that is why we have not had, not had that up until this point. But it may need to happen at some point. And hopefully, you know, you can be open to, to the idea. We know it's not ideal, but it may be necessary at times. I just wanted to comment, thank you.
Any other members?
I had a couple of questions, Jackie.
Already, yeah.
Thank you. So I'm gonna start with the students who are due to come back sooner. I do have a few questions and comments beyond that, though. So in terms of the, the CSA students, I've gotten a number of outreach regarding the class size for those. So typically, you'll have nine students in a class, a CSA class. And I know we've been trying to keep it to seven, but is that gonna be? Nine is not during a pandemic. Has there been any thought to, especially the preschool CSA classes, what we're gonna do in terms of limiting the size? Those are the children that have the most difficulty with the masks and the social distancing.
Superintendent?
Ms. Desmond?
So the, the three percent that's returning is the three percent that was in school up through December. I think December eighteenth was our last day. And so those classes were based on the size of, or the number of students in the classes were, that number was based on the, the six feet of social distancing and the spacing. So that, that is not changing. When those students return, they're coming back in those same class sizes at this point.
Okay, can you, sorry to interrupt. So does that mean nine or does that mean twelve? Her question was, are they over nine people?
No.
I think the question was, nine is typically standard. And in some cases, the numbers are significantly lower than that in some classrooms because of the six feet of social distancing. The, the needs of the students in many of our sub-separate programs require a larger number of adults in the room. And so we have to consider six feet for everybody, including the adults. So the numbers tend to be very significantly reduced in those, in those classrooms during our three percent in-person time. So I can look to see what the rosters look like. There are, there are quite a few classes. But again, it was all based on six feet of social distancing in the spaces that the classes were in.
Just to clarify, are you saying that that will continue to be the basis as we go into the March first and we start to expand the, the amount of students and teachers in class? We're gonna stick with the six feet social distancing requirement for these classes going forward?
I, I will defer to Jim Hall in operations for that. Dr. Hall?
The plan right now, thank you, I can answer that question, Ms. Desmond. Thank you. We'll let him off the hook for a second. There is a, so the plan right now, until the committee adjusts it, I will, we will bring back to you a recommendation for an amendment to the reopening plan, but we don't plan at this point to amend the six feet of social distancing. However, there is still a significant amount of time between now and April one and with the vaccine rolling out and new, I get new guidance nearly daily at this point. So I'll share that new guidance with the committee as you're to come. But as of today, we don't anticipate an adjustment to the six feet social distancing within our recommended amendment. But the reopening plan and amendment to the reopening plan is within the purview of the school committee and we'll follow whatever recommendations and decisions the committee makes.
Thank you. So back to the substantially separate program, I have one more question about that. So I know that we have invested quite a bit in our PPEs. We have all that equipment. I just wanna make sure that in each substantially separate classroom, that they are equipped with the masks, the sanitizer, all those things they need within the classroom, that they don't have to leave to go someplace else to get the masks. Are we doing that? Are we providing each classroom teacher with those pieces of equipment that they, the masks, the sanitizer at each class for those substantially separate programs that are gonna be back on Monday?
Ms. Desmond?
I'll answer that, yeah.
Ms. Desmond?
So we are providing the classes with all of the PPE. And I believe up through December. I know at the very beginning, there were some questions around who to ask for the PPE in some places and that, that was resolved. So I don't expect that to be any issue returning because it wasn't an issue when we ended in December.
But if somebody has a question about would they go to your office or Mr. Lovato? He's the director of special. I just, if they didn't have the supplies they needed, who should they reach out to?
Their principal. The teacher, the teacher should always go to the principal and the principals know who to go to. Any teacher in the audience, please feel free, contact your principal. Principal knows where to, knows where to go immediately. But I think it's also important to, again, to reiterate the families. If your child was in-person in December, then your child is coming back to in-person on February twenty-second. February twenty-second is only for the youngsters, the students who are in-person in December. I get, I've gotten a lot of calls about in-person opportunities. If February twenty-second, if your student was in-person in December. March one, if your student was in-person in September and October, but not in-person in November. April one, if your child has not been in-person at all this school year. Thank you, Ms. Dory. I'll probably reiterate that a couple more times as the, as the show allows.
Thank you. And my, the last comment really, and I don't expect you to have all the answers right now because we're still putting it together, but regarding, you know, the changes we're gonna make in April to bring back more, I'm assuming that that's open to the seventy-five percent, but not everybody's gonna wanna be in this hybrid model. Some families are gonna choose to stay remote. And as we saw with the task force over the summer, they had a D cohort. The D cohort was the remote only. So what are you thinking in terms of actual numbers will be coming back after the twenty-five percent? What additional will we be able to support for this hybrid approach?
So everybody's gonna be within the model. But if you ultimately, if you're assigned to a cohort and you're choosing to be remote, you'll be remote on your days as well. The plan is to try to keep as much continuity for relationships and rosters as possible. So what we've heard clearly from our families as well as our teachers is that adjustments at this point to relationships and continuity academically is really the last place that we should go. So the task forces you're referencing are from the summer in advance of an opening roster. We've already established opening rosters. Teacher relationships have already been established. So we'll share that with you as we share out the cohorting and the cohort development. But there's not a plan right now to start to disrupt teacher-student relationships. Our goal right now, which I think a little bit Mr. Dillon alluded to, our goal at the very beginning was to avoid this simultaneous teaching altogether. But no matter how we constructed, if we're in April now, there's gonna be a necessity for some simultaneous teaching in order for us to not disrupt students, families and academic continuity. So it's an outcome of the fact that we are now down to April, which is an amendment to the reopening plan. So that's how that would work in this instance. It requires that simultaneous teaching that the vast majority of other school districts in the Commonwealth have already been in. But we've, we've consciously chosen to not do that first and to make that our last choice. And now we're to that last choice scenario, which is what we're gonna be coming to you for, for April. But that's as far as we can go with that development. The survey results are still coming in.
Okay, so just in final comments in terms of that, we have six weeks before we get to that April date. So we need to move, I would think, soon to let our, our parents and our families and our staff make plans and know when we look at the hybrid model and you've got large, you know, we've had issues with class inconsistency that we've only know, know about anecdotally. We haven't actually seen the data. But when you have teachers that have a much larger class size, I, I would be interested in seeing how you're gonna support those teachers with Paris or whatever else, as well as the materials they'll need, like microphones, two screens, you know, a lot of the stuff the task force identified, as well as the professional development, the training to help our teachers transition to this. It's all in a very tight timeframe. So those are just some of the concerns that I, I think we need to be looking at in terms of how we really transition to a hybrid model that although everybody knows it's not ideal, we're at least getting our students into the buildings and having that in-person instruction. How do we do it in a way that best serves all the stakeholders?
Thank you. By way of advertisement, that'll be on your Monday Finance Subcommittee package for the budget adjustments. So stay tuned for your Monday Finance Subcommittee meeting. Professional development, equipment, supplemental staffing is all within that budget adjustment package.
Thank you, Mr. Hoey, and then Mr. Dillon.
Mayor, I just, I'll try to be brief. The number one thing is that three percent for me, I've been feeling like, I feel guilty that I'm neglecting those three percent by not having them in schools. And not just the children, there's parents at home being neglected because they cannot give that three percent what they need. The quadrant right behind the Pine School might be one of the biggest CSA classes in the system. And I watch what happens in the playground. I watch how they act coming off buses and on buses. We need, we should have done it yesterday. And if there's anything we're looking bad in, we're looking bad at that. We shouldn't have ever even took that three percent off. But, but again, we're on the right track. We're going back. Let's go. Let's just move it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sleep a lot better when I know those three percent are in our classrooms. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering if maybe Dr. Boyd can confirm or someone else, the waitlist scenario for parents who have children on the waitlist? If they were on the waitlist prior, they're still in the same position to get in-person instruction, like when we do open up to a fifty percent scenario, does that? But I don't know, we're changing, we're changing direction slightly. Does, you know, what does the waitlist position mean to them, I guess, is probably the best question?
Yeah, we, thank you, Mr. Dillon. We, we are planning to maintain those waitlists. In some cases, for some schools, they've exhausted the waitlist and then they're moving on to offer those opportunities to others. So the schools are working through their waitlist. There, the twenty-five percent, the way to think about this committee is, we have a subset of full-time in-person opportunities that are available through the weighted lottery for our most vulnerable learners to be in school. Those seats are limited for full-time in-person, only to approximately thirty-two hundred, thirty-two hundred seats. Those seats are available once they're filled. If there's a seat that goes open, the schools go to their waitlist. Once they exhaust that waitlist, they then move through those other vulnerable weights that the committee updated that policy just a couple of months ago. That's all, that all stays, that will stay for the duration of the year. That comes back into play on March one with the reopening for twenty-five percent. The next cohort on April one will be a second cohort of part-time in-person learners. That's the hybrid. So a kid could theoretically move, be in part-time, but then their name, a seat comes available and they're on that list for full-time. They could choose to move full-time, but at that point, they would be shifting their teacher. So we could see theoretically, families may not want those seats anymore because they wanna stay with their teacher. There's no way for us to adjust that. So families, you should know, it's going full-time, you're going to a full-time classroom that has a teacher assigned. If you're in the hybrid in April one, that's where we're able to keep continuity for your teacher that you currently have. So yes, Mr. Dillon, it, it is that those waitlists stay, but there is some decisions that families will have to make if they're, if they get called from that waitlist at this juncture in the year.
Okay, so I'm, yes, I mean, any, any, any scenario that might come up where the waitlist was used to get their student, you know, next in line for in-person instruction is still in place, you know, but pending further decisions down the road. Is that good analysis yet?
Yeah, it is. And families should feel confident. Give me a call. Matter of fact, Mr. Dillon, I've had, got a couple of calls directed directly to my office about, you know, how do they get opportunities? Don't hesitate, families. Feel free to call my office. You can call the principal's office and you can also call the family resource center. Everybody's available to help.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on the report? Just one quick question. When you, to the superintendent, when you mentioned going hybrid and students may have to go to another teacher, is that correct? Like, if they want in-house learning?
Only if they're shifting to the full-time seats. So the goal right now is that we could.
Just interrupt. How is that gonna work with five different kids, five different classrooms? Aren't they gonna be in five different spots? They're not gonna be all the same point of learning, I guess?
Oh, at the secondary level?
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to? Yeah, so at the secondary level, you'll have multiple teachers and the same thing applies. If you're choosing to move from a, from your current seat into a full-time seat, those are seats that are available. So the teachers that are in those classrooms with those open seats, you're transferring into a different program. So that's, that's one of the things that families will have to consider and they'll all be notified of that. But our goal with the April one part-time is that we can keep continuity with teachers. So it'll only be a family choice if they shift to the full-time learning. We won't be forcing it. So it'll only be a family choice if they shift to the full-time learning. We won't be forcing it.
Um, okay, oh, okay. All right, any other-
Sure. Sorry, just one quick question. I know that we haven't got the data yet from the surveys, right? We're not getting that, or are we getting that tonight?
No, that's not, that's not a, tonight's a vacation week for our schools, so we actually had the surveys moved directly into our schools. Our schools are facilitating them because they have class rosters, but they have to be able to check off the, the students' interests within each class roster.
So I just want to make sure that when we are communicating with families, um, we're letting parents know that if they come back in person, it's going to be a hybrid model. Is that clear in the questionnaires?
Is, yeah, the conversations are had with families about in-person learning and then as the model becomes clearer, we'll reach back out to families. We already have, uh, we have dates already pegged for full community forums as well. So uh, we're gonna be making sure that we communicate with families along the way. We've shared with families everything that we know right now. We'll continue to share everything we know along the way.
I, I'm just thinking that if a parent sees, oh, I can have them come back and they think it's full-time, like the twenty-five percent, that's a very different scenario if you need daycare. Then uh, two days in, you know, two, three days remote. I just want to make sure that when we're talking to families, they understand what their options are.
Yeah, we'll, we'll share with families along the way. Every, every information we have, we'll share with them. So as we build this out further, we'll start certainly make sure we share with families and there's a short runway. And uh, Mr. Mayor, were you asking about middle schools or high schools? Cause I, I think that's always going to be important for us to differentiate. When you said you had mul-, were you thinking the high school?
No, I'm just thinking any grade level. If you get five kids from any grade level, five different teachers, five different students, and you put them into one classroom, they could all be at five different points of learn.
Yeah, there's our ele-, that's, that's true, and that's something we'll have to plan for, but our, our elementary schools, so our K H use a, um, uh, use a scope and sequence outline that is supported through uh Ms. Dedzman's office. So if there's a little less variability and variation within, within schools even then, and then across schools. So there's a little bit of ways to mitigate, but yeah, at this point in the year, you're right, it requires a lot of articulation anytime a kid shifts. But it also is, um, it, it also, at the same time, the high school, what we're really working on is kids are not going to be shifting their rosters. So sometimes we have high school students that are, are viewing in. You're a high school student, the classes you're in now will be the classes you'll be in. Whatever we put together for in-person opportunity is not going to require you to shift your course schedule at the high school. Uh, so I think that was also important to note, but yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's gonna be something that we have to plan for. Kids shifting from teachers at this point of the year does create disruption. It's inevitable.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll set with this report. Uh, we'll go to district-wide key performance indicators.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dr. Guillory is uh going to share mid-year review of our KPIs. If you recall, committee, these are the key performance indicators that uh we established at the beginning of the year. That uh you then had an opportunity to hear a first quarter review. Each quarter, you get an update. Dr. Guillory is going to share with you the mid-year review of the data as well as uh, uh, a brief share out of how we utilize that data to bring about continuous improvement. Dr. Guillory?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Next slide, Jeffrey. Topic points for tonight are, as Dr. Boyd shared, the key uh KPI update. Also taking a look at our Renaissance Network, what we've been doing with instructional rounds, our visiting classrooms. And then a status check on our equip process. Next slide, the next two slides. So what we want to share um is a quick look at where we are at the mid-year check-in. Um, what we've seen uh in the data as it's uh coming off the hopper very quickly. Um, we've noticed um certainly a decrease in the number of suspension referrals that stood out uh pretty prominently. We've also noticed uh an increase in two percentage points of our student daily attendance as well as a decrease of four percentage points in our chronic absenteeism. So again, these are metrics that uh schools watch or monitor on a daily basis. Whereas our discipline referrals, uh, we look at those quarterly at the system level, but schools look at those daily as well. Um, and then an, an increase in the language access service, certainly areas for improvement. Uh, as we've shared, or has been the topic of conversation, I think, at each of our committee meetings is how are we uh supporting our students during these very challenging times? Uh, so we did uh notice um a slight dip, but more of a flat lining. I wouldn't call this statistically significant at this point uh in the core classes at the middle school level. Next slide. So what we've um done since the last time um you saw this was we have um looked at our quarter one metric. So we've been working, our data team has been working very closely with the high school uh to get their initial metrics in. And so this quarter one metric that you're seeing for the high school, the fifty-five percent are those that are on track with three uh MCAS, um, uh, three of their MCAS uh exams passed. Um, coming into their senior year as well as um a schedule that um, that will allow them to graduate in um, in June. Uh, so that number is represented at fifty-five percent. I believe that cohort stands at about eight hundred twenty students, more or less. Um, but the idea here is that as the metrics, as we continue progressing through each of the marking periods, uh, that number will continue to uptick as students um, uh, begin to sort of actualize how they're doing in their current classes uh as well as moving toward graduation, um, as well as taking advantage of the many supports that I think the high school shared out uh in a report that we shared at last school committee. Um, when I think Mr. Dakota requested around um what mitigating measures will the high school do to keep students moving towards uh graduation. Um, the, uh, the ELA proficiency as well as the mass math proficiency. I think you saw those numbers last time, the uh window, and that's for my eye-ready exam. So the window uh is still open for that assessment, so they have one more week. I think uh when we come back from February break to complete those assessments, so that information will be updated at that time. We've also tried to uh identify uh the number of students that are being assessed in those. And so that again points to making sure that all schools are reporting or have reported their information in there. And that becomes a follow-up for us. Then when we look down um for the course grades here, this is where I told you there was a slight dip. So if you look at the middle school math, you see in quarter one, there were sixty percent of students that were passing at the middle school level. That's taking a dip down to sixty-six. Uh, for the middle school ELA from seventy-five to seventy-two. For middle school science, uh, from seventy down to sixty-seven, and for middle school social studies, seventy-five to seventy-two. Um, so again, all of those, our school leaders, certainly our teachers, um, are doubling down um, working with students as well as families to make sure that students are um adhering to the um grade level curricular expectations, but also uh making sure that they're being provided the necessary support. So we'll continue working uh very closely um with our curriculum coordinators at central office to also provide additional supports and reinforcement as needed. And then the discipline metric that I mentioned from quarter one to quarter two, from the fifteen down to two. So it was a decrease, but we were uh making sure that we coded those appropriately in terms of the color being green. Next slide.
Can I ask, would we want to entertain questions as we move the material, or would you rather wait till the end?
Nope, that's fine. Nope, this is fine now.
Okay, um, thank you very much for that. Um, I, I just wanted to check in, you know, obviously as we look, I'm looking particularly at that the course grade information. Um, it's certainly disappointed to see a dip. You know, we're in the C minus kind of D range in terms of performance. Um, but to be clear, it is completely and totally understandable. You know, this is a, a, a new mode of learning and teaching. And so, I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone is surprised that, you know, that, that grades and, and uh kind of assessments are going to reflect that. What I do want us to be really clear on is that this is one of many indicators that is going to tell us that the work we do this summer and that the work we're prepared to do in September needs to be specifically aligned in professional development and all the other activities that we're going to be taking on. And I know the, the superintendent is already hinting that we'll hear a lot about this Monday night, so that's very exciting. Um, but it's really going to have to be directed on how we do appropriate interventions to take students who are, students who are doing the best they can, teachers who are doing the best they can. But we still have to be able to do appropriate interventions as we're getting back on track. Uh, again, over the course of the summer and coming into September, so that we can bring these students back up to, to kind of grade level performance, so that we can do that remedial work um effectively to get kids back on track as we go into the next year. That was my only comment. Thank you.
No, and I, and I think that again is, is perfectly situated in terms of what uh leaders are calling out as in terms of needs. So how, how then do we take advantage of summer learning opportunities as well as what we can do real time? As well as what we can do on recess breaks, uh, February recess, I believe there are some uh institutes that are currently occurring, as well as what might we do on the uh April recess as well. So um, that point uh is, you hit a home run with that comment.
I love a sports metaphor. That's great.
Um, as far as Ms. Martin's comments, um, this is probably gonna, uh, Dr. Guillory, this is probably gonna be like, what, a three or four-year catch-up plan? I mean, we're not gonna catch up next year, right? So.
Yeah, there's, uh, Mr. Mayor, it's a, uh, it provides a great segue for us to, that we have this ESER grant coming our way. The application was just open. It's an opportunity here to really focus on learning loss. It's not one year. It's, it's three summers and two full school years that this grant's available to the committee. Uh, we are going to be recommending that we look at this grant as a two-year, three-summer grant. Other committees might be looking at it differently, but we're going to be recommending to the committee that you take advantage of the full window. Uh, you don't get more dollars for the full window, but it does take more than just one year to overcome some of the challenges that our kids are experiencing right now. So uh, yes, this is going to be a multi-year process. We are going to be recommending to the committee if the ESER grants come in as expected, that we look at a significant expansion of summer school. We look at a significant expansion of our after-school opportunities. We do those currently in a limited way, utilizing a different grant, Twenty First Century Grant that the committee may be familiar with. We're going to be utilizing that ESER grant, and our recommendation to the committee will be that we look at it over the full window so that we can uh sequence in the interventions over time. Uh, you're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Continue, Dr. Guillory. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. So here, um, I think the DESA information, this is the social emotional assessment that you saw, I think, last time. I believe this was on here. If not, um, the numbers are indicated here. And again, we use the green, uh, yellow, red to sort of indicate where students are presently situated. I know the next assessment window opens, I believe, um, uh, the week after break and goes through about March tenth. So that information will then be updated at the subsequent um settings. Um, the attendance piece here, there is a, an error in the baseline numbers there. I know what's happening there. Those are what we call our ghost schools of the double accounting, but uh we'll make sure that that's uh reflected for our fourth, our baseline should be fourteen thousand there. Um, uh, which will pull down the numerator to still remain at ninety-two percent though. So our student attendance rate um has uh seen an uptick of two percentage points there. And then our chronic absenteeism has uh taken a, a drop of four percentage points. So again, that um is speaking to the work that, the outreach work that's happening um at the school levels, as well as looking again at the present hardship that everyone is currently experiencing. Um, the facility, this man.
Before you go on, just I have a question about that chronic absenteeism.
Oh, go ahead.
Can you just, can you just define what that is? I think last meeting when we've heard about this, I was a little confused about that twenty-four percent. So now that it, it's, it's great that it's going in the right direction, but can you just define what that means?
So chronic, uh, a student is, is identified as chronically absent. Uh, and we're using the state metric here if they have missed uh ten percent of their days enrolled. So for example, if a student is enrolled two days and they miss one day, they are chronic, considered chronically absent because they would have missed fifty percent of their time enrolled. So it's a measure of how many days missed over their days enrolled. Um, and so we use the ten percent metric. So if a student, so out of the course of a, a, uh, in this case, seventeen, a hundred seventy days of enrollment, if a student is at seventeen days absent, um, they would be considered chronically absent by the time we get to end of school in June. So it's a, it's the ten, basically, if you think of it, the ten percent rule of whatever days, number of days we're in. So if we've been in day, if we've been in school fifty days and the student started with us on the first day of school and they've missed five days or been absent five days, they would be considered chronically absent. If they've only been absent four days, they would be sort of on a school's watch list because they, they would be showing um a high percentage or, or showing pretty close to hitting that ten percent rule. So they would be sort of a watch kid in that case. Um, and again, we have procedures at three days, I think, five days, uh, nine days in terms of notices and following up. That's essentially what chronic means, is that they've missed ten percent of their days enrolled. And it's not always from the first day of school because if a kid enrolls late in the year, that's when their, their, their counter starts essentially.
Got it. But so right now, we're at the end of quarter two, twenty percent of our students are considered chronically absent based on the number of days they've been attending school.
Correct, or they've been enrolled.
Or they've been enrolled. So, okay, so basically though, we're, you know, as the work continues, we should, we should, we would want to see that number just continue to drop.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and, and if, if all's, in an ideal world, uh, if we've, if their absences were to freeze right now and they are not absent anymore, you would see that continue to just paper off as such.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor. Yep, Mr. Hoey.
Um, Dr. Guillory, uh, first thing I'd like to ask you, are we losing you, number one? I'd like to know that. Are you gone or are you paying?
Well, let's stay with the uh program, Bob. Thank you.
The two things I want to ask you is, one is the dropout rate at low highs always bothered me. It's tripled over the past few years. And uh, this year, I would think that we should think about, we always say no child left behind and not enough people maybe stay back. I, I believe this could be the year that we should look into that. It might help children if we keep them back the year. I know we can't keep them all back, but I, I just had a good feeling that a lot of them might be graduated out of high school and not gonna be ready. And I, I just wanted to know your opinion on that, Dr. Guillory.
Yeah, so certainly, um, we do continue to watch the uh, those students that are struggling to uh remain supported in school. And that's one of the bodies of work that Mr. Piato and the high school team are very closely monitoring as well. What are those um second, third, fourth, fifth chances for the students? Our goal is always to get them the diploma, um, but when the, when the family has made a decision to seek um alternative directions out, then we want to provide the proper resources to get them some form of a high school completion in that, in that manner. So I know the high school team is working closely on that, and I don't have the dropout, um, the projected or preliminary information in front of me, but I'll pull that information as well.
Got it on mute, Ms. uh Martin?
Thank you very much. And this actually tracks right on with uh Mr. Hoey's question. So um, in terms of the, the change from this thirteen, eight, sixty-seven, seeing that that, you know, the, the, that that's being reduced in the, the second quarter. Um, and again, if you need to check this out first, that's perfectly fine. Um, but in terms of where those students are, are, are exiting the system, if, it, it would be really interesting and I think critical for us to know. Um, is there a significant number from the high school? Um, you know, I, again, anecdotally, I'm hearing that there are a lot of students at the high school who are just, you know, kind of opting out. Um, so I just want to know, is that where we're seeing a significant decrease in the numbers? Um, again, right, you know, it's right in line with the dropout question. That's what these students would be uh kind of classified as. Um, but I, it would, you know, I know that that's the gross total of the district, but I, I, I would have, I think it'd be great for us to get more of a, a, an understanding of kind of at what levels those, those removals are happening.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up on that piece as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions before we continue? Okay, go ahead, Dr. Guillory.
And then our next slide here, um. Oh, we need to uh, plug in our numbers for the diversity hiring as well as the subfield rate. Um, but again, our remote students, um, we shifted everyone to remote. Um, and at the, so um, that's what those, uh, the remote and in-person enrollment. Numbers are showing and then the PPE stockpile is showing um. The increase from three months of supply to five months, given that we've been. Uh, we've not been using uh, the numbers, um, that equipment in that. So we have. Um, I won't speak for the operations team, but reflected that we have five months uh, of stockpile at this point. Next slide. And then um, for the family and community engagement, um, Chief Phillips' office put some surveys out uh, to our families. So their reflective numbers are, are showing here based on the questions that were asked of families. Um, that seventy-eight percent of the families indicated that they were um, satisfied with the academics. Uh, operations here, I think it's a bit of a misnomer. This is more about uh, the registration and their placement. Uh, in schools this year, more so than the operations. Um, communication stands at eighty-two percent as well as safe and welcoming environment. Um, the language access uh, numbers for quarter one and quarter two are reflected here. Um. For Lion Bridge as well as Bay State. And then for our SSC participation. Uh, what we've done is broken that up into the two quarters to indicate the number of meetings that have been held. And then for our parent teacher conferences, we um. Uh, we'll make sure that we're tracking this. And again, this is beta version one of these particular dashboards. So what might be more useful and beneficial number uh, information than just the counts uh, moving forward? Um, I think that's, you know, that's gonna be the next iteration of the work, but. Um, our school leaders reported about fifty-six hundred uh, parent teacher conferences for the uh, fall session. And then we'll track to see how many conferences we have uh, in this, in the spring session as well. Next slide.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a question? Um, thank you. Dr. Guillory. Uh, or um, I'm not sure who might answer this, but that, what is the difference between the Lion Bridge and the Bay State? And is there um, you know, why one might be used versus the other?
It'll probably be Ms. Phillips. Can you answer that question?
Yes, um, School Committee Member Clark. Lion Bridge is um, is telephone access. For um, immediate interpretation needs. Um, and Bay State, we've used more for um, planned meetings, right? Meetings that are gonna take a longer amount of time. Um, and then also more so for our, for our um, translation. So translation of documents is what we use Bay State for predominantly.
Thank you. And, and just to go back to the school site council, that's the S, I think it says S, it does say SCC in the. Um, on the screen, but that should be SSD. Is that right?
Correct.
So this is, so can you just say what those numbers represent one more time for me, please?
So those numbers uh, should uh, represent, uh, reflect the number of meetings that were held uh, during those, during those, those quarter or those periods. So basically you're looking at the first quarter that ended um. Round um, end of Nov, end of October, November. And then um, second quarters um, wrapped up at the beginning of uh, February or so.
Thank you. Very helpful.
All right, next slide, please.
Sorry, I got a couple of questions on that last slide. Sorry.
Hello, Ms. Darney.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to know um, how many people uh, replied to the survey and how was it distributed to our families?
Ms. Phillips?
Our School Committee Member Doherty. About three thousand families had um. Had um, submitted the survey at the time that this information was, was um, you know. Um, documented. However, the, the survey closes today. So, so there's likely more people who submitted the survey between. Um, you know, the date that Dr. Guillory created the dashboard and now. Um, the information he provided was preliminary data. Um, we did share it um, via our, our usual. Um, you know, communications methods. So our um. You know, our text message, our email, phone call, um, social media. Also asked our schools to share this out to families as well.
Thank you.
All right, next slide. Thank you. So here is um. Some of the work that I think we're very um, proud to show or showcase of what's, what's happening with this. So. You see the dashboard as we're sharing it with you um, in steel format. But what the data team has been doing is building what um, are starting the early stages of what we've been trying to get at. Um, so this is um, a representation of their work to sort of show. For each school, what their respective information is for the dashboard or the metrics that we're presently tracking. Uh, in the system. So this is a sort of custom built. It certainly is not the um, at the robust level that uh, I think we're seeking or needing. But I think in, in terms of what we presently have, our capabilities. This sort of shows us um, at a school level, what uh, metrics or information that they have at their disposal. So um, the big takeaways here that schools and, and the, the school leaders and um. Uh, principals and assistant principals have been very pleased with um, this interactive dashboard. Uh, because they can then go and click to, similar to the question that Ms. Clark asked about. Chronic absenteeism. They can, this is a clickable dashboard. They can go and click. And actually see which students are on that dashboard, again, to provide real-time intervention. It updates each night as such. So uh, kudos to the data team for their work on this, but we just wanted to show you some of the internal. Um, pieces that we're currently developing. Our next slide, uh, for the Renaissance Network. Again, this is a reminder of the seven schools that reside in the network. Um, the Stocklosa, Sullivan, Lowell High, um, Robinson, Butler, Bartlett and the Green Alge we have as an honorary member. Um, because they um, we've identified them, but they are, they do not have a state uh, plan that they are actually operating under. But we do uh, have them participating in the work. Next slide. So this year we have undertaken, last year, you know, we were doing uh, instructional rounds in the schools. Uh, this year, given um, all the strains that everyone is under. Uh, we wanted to continue visiting and checking in on schools. And so what we have um. Elected to do is focus on the strengths base um, uh, visits to schools. So the idea is that we go in and look at small sets, small samples of classes to say what's going well. And how can we then replicate that or give the, give the school, uh, school teams uh, feedback? On what's working well and what they might do to replicate that or, or bring that up to scale across their schools. So there are four areas of four large um, areas that they look at, uh, student engagement. When instructional methods are used, what's, um, how is the teacher, how are the teacher and student interacting with content? And then what feedback and assessment looks like real time. So this just shows you in this mock-up, and I know it's difficult to read on your screens. Um, on the left side, it wa, is showing what, what uh, behaviors the students may be engaged in. And on the right side, maybe the types of behaviors that the teacher is engaged in. And then more specifically, you're looking for what's happening in real time in those classrooms. So we have upcoming visits. Um, the Bartlett will be visiting on February twenty-third. LHS will be visiting on February twenty-fifth. And we've already conducted visits in Stocklosa. Uh, Sullivan, Stocklosa, Butler and Robinson. And again, as I shared, the Green Alge is an honorary member. So we have the Green Alge principal actually participating in all of these visits. Uh, Dr. Scarpatti. And then she is then able to see what's happening. As her students would be transitioning over to middle school. And what other preparations might they be doing at the elementary level to better prepare students uh. To, to be received into middle schools. Next slide. And my final slide for the evening is just to give you a status check of where we are in the quality improvement planning process. Um, our February leadership, um, we did another workshop on the problem of practice. Where each principal uh, was to bring in either something. Uh, a goal that they were working on from their quip or a challenge they were working on from their quip. Uh, present that uh, in sort of visual file to their peers, to two or three other peers. And then that was the questioning process. Refinements and improvements and what um, the schools um, are able to deliver upon. They take that back to their teams. Uh, for further action. So our next step in the quip process will be to. Uh, for schools to uh, review their data profiles and their projections that are March. Our leadership and then submit their quips so that we can then begin. Uh, setting up or begin the budgeting process, budgeting defense process. And with that, I'll turn the mic back over to Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Dr. Guillory. Uh, really, uh, really incredible, incredible work there. Appreciate all of your work, all the work of the teaching and learning office, the work of our schools. Uh, each of those areas are areas that were presented by our community and by our schools as significant gaps in the work. Uh, when I was coming on board as superintendent, and I think I shared with the committee and the public before. That some of the work that sets us aside from other districts, whereas other districts put pause on some of this work during the course of the pandemic. We've continued to proceed and progress along with our strategic plan and. Uh, Dr. Guillory and Ms. Desmond have been leading that particular aspect of the work. And kudos to your teams and. Uh, particularly the teams that put together the instructional rounds. Uh, you remember we shared about that, what that looked like in person. These are not just simply visits to the principal's office. These are observations, collaborative observations of classrooms. So that we can support and improve classroom instruction, teaching and learning. On a daily basis to support our schools even further, based on the strengths and based on the great work that's already happening. Uh, with that, uh, the staff stands for questions.
Any questions, Ms. Martin?
Uh, there you go. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um. And I appreciate all the work that went into this report too. So, so I, I echo those, those sentiments from the superintendent. Thank you very much. Um, I guess my question is. You know, historically within the district, we've always had the capacity with our assessments and, and some of the, you know, the different technologies that we use. That we've been able to kind of um, be able to see. You know, down to the granular, granular level in a, in a, even in a classroom. Where we might be missing specific uh, benchmarks, where we might be. Uh, you know, when we, we've kind of set up our curriculum standards so that we're kind of constantly measuring students. Um, kind of uh, achievement against specific learning standards, you know, based on our, you know, all the curriculum maps and all that stuff. Uh, is that something that's kind of still in place? What I'm. What I'm driving off of is again, this breakdown of um. Kind of the, the, the course grades as we look at them. You know, the, the math seems to be among the most challenging, say. Do we have any sense within that? Is there a specific, a specific curriculum standard that we know we're challenged by in this particular environment? That we just, you know, that we can single out as saying, you know, that's part of the, the concern is that. Algebraic concepts are particularly challenging to teach in a remote, you know, scenario. Have we, do we have that kind of, kind of very directed data?
That would be the data that will come out of our benchmark assessments, which we're currently in the, the second window. But Ms. Desmond, can you provide uh? Any further nuanced answer there to Ms. Martin at the moment?
So you're right, um, Dr. Boyd, um, all of our math um, assessments are broken down to the standards and so. Um, once the, the assessments are completed and the grades are entered. Um, the math resource features along with the curriculum coordinator for mathematics will review those results to determine. What standard would need intervention or more support. And the same uh, is true with our I-ready assessments as well. That gets broken down to the standard level. So oftentimes what we'll do is, we'll do. Uh, we'll cross-reference to see if our in-class assessments. At the benchmark assessments and the data we're seeing around standards there is a match to the I-ready. Um, which is obviously standardized assessment. Um, if there's a match there so that we can look to do tier-two interventions in those areas.
That's great. Thank you very much. It'll be interesting as you go through this next round to see if there are any things that kind of bubble up as. As specific areas where, where we have challenges. Thank you very much.
Any other questions on the report? Okay. Uh, next. Any questions on the report of motions?
I had a question.
Sure, Mr. Darney.
Uh, thank you. I'm uh, looking at the motion that Mr. Dakota made February nineteen, twenty-twenty. Um, I believe it's on page two. Um, it's regarding the um. The school site councils and how they're set up. So I, I did a little research. I, I'm not a hundred percent an expert on this, but my understanding is. Uh, schools have some leeway about how they run their elections and their terms and all that. Um, but we as the body, uh, the governing body, the school committee is supposed to approve those plans. So I just, I thought that we're, we're still waiting for Mr. Dakota's motion. That's been a year now. Um, maybe we could get some information about each school site council. How the, you know, what's their term? How did they do the elections? You know, who are the members, whatever. Um, and as part of our role in terms of being the, the body that approves them. So I just wanted to put that out there because that's been a while, a year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the reports?
Um. I'd just say if I, and I don't know if you wanna go through the, the specifically, I know that we do need to vote on the school committee rules. I don't know if there are any votes associated with the vaccine distribution report.
Just, just that one, Ms. Martin. Uh, the rules require an adjustment to the committee rules. So you'll see in your packet for. Uh, eight-point, three-point-two. If you look at the cover letter, there's a recommended motion of the committee. Um, that Ms. Martin is referencing. Uh, we look for the committee to make that motion and formally adopt the recommended adjustment, which is within the response to motion, which is the attachment to the cover letter.
And just for everyone's information, that basically we're going for that any materials for a subcommittee or a special meeting will be provided publicly. Forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, which we had voted on last week. So I'd make a motion to accept that change to the rules.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Darney, seconded by Ms. Clark.
Motion by Ms. Martin.
Uh, what I say, yeah, okay. Um, so roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dylan?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Seventy-eight to four.
Okay, any other questions on A three? Mr. Howie, any questions on your report?
I just wanna make a few comments, Mayor. Uh, one, I thank you, uh, Ms. Desmond for this report. Uh, I know we haven't had any, uh. What I like to call on the children in front of us, but I know the social workers. About sixty percent of them, they read the report, meet at least ten or more students on average every day. So that, that made me happy. Uh, the thing that I'm concerned about with social emotional learning. And I always like to throw something in the superintendent's ear. Because I think some people, you know, the, the principals and the administration at each school. Might be just a little hesitant about this issue, social emotional uh, learning. And uh, I'm a little concerned about them not opening up their arms about it because. I want it to be blown out of the water. I didn't think this is a big issue. Uh, but I think once they go back to school, we got more in there, I think it's gonna be something. That's gonna turn into something special. I think it, there's a lot of kids that need social emotional learning. And um, they, in person. Online and Google and. But I'm, I'm, I'm dying to get back to live action, home visits and stuff like that because that's what I think we need. So, but thank you so much. So, but thank you so much. Uh, Lindsay Killaway, thank you for helping this out too. I appreciate the report and thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Um, okay, any other questions on the personnel report?
I did have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, just, you know, in quickly looking at this, I'm just curious if we can. Drill down maybe a little bit, you know, looking at the, the number of resignations, close to fifty percent of the resignations in this report are special ed teachers. Uh, it seems like, I mean, it's seven altogether out of fifteen resignations. Um, but it just seems like a somewhat high number in a very specific position. So I didn't know if we could. Um, maybe just check in with the special ed department, see if there's something that is challenging because I mean. Media resignations are kind of weird to begin with anyway. You don't generally see that many of them.
Ms. Desmond, can you take that note? Ms. Desmond supervises the special education department.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
That's an affirmative nod.
I'll accept that. It's the negative nods that kill me.
I was on mute. I was on mute. I apologize.
It was a great answer, Robin.
Um, and I had a quick question too, um, Ms. Desmond. So, well, Mr. Hall. Um, so I was wondering the same thing. Um, we get about fifteen retirements and. Resignations, but I don't see any hires. So. Shouldn't, shouldn't there be more hires?
Dr. Hall? You just muted yourself, Dr. Hall.
I, I didn't see that too. Um, some of those are effective in June, so it doesn't look, um, it isn't as big as it looks, but.
Well, there's fifteen people retiring in December and January and February. So not to put you guys on the spot, but. We must have filled these positions, right, by now?
Uh, not all of them, Mayor. We have quite a bit of um positions on school spring right now for hire due to resignations and retirement.
Alright, so. This just doesn't seem acceptable. What, like, we got fifteen people retired, we have nobody in a classroom? That's what it looks like.
Um, there are people in all the classrooms. Um, but unfortunately, most people are in their teaching positions right now for the year, so. The supply of those available for special ed jobs in particular isn't very high at this time of the year, but. We continue to advertise, well, we continue to post on Indeed. We did have an advertisement for a while. I'll put that. Uh, back up in there on uh school spring as well. So I mean, I think one of the problems is there's, uh, we need a lot of people in these educational jobs and the. Supply of those applying uh isn't meeting up with it.
So how, how are we meeting the needs of the students then?
Well, then we do have quite a, a bit of um paraprofessionals who have college degrees who can become licensed. So they're stepping up in many occasions and then we're advertising. Paraprofessional jobs to backfill those. Um, so that's how we're managing it for now. Um, but if we don't fill those positions over the next. Month or two, it'll become much more difficult.
Um, alright, this, this kind of seems like I don't want to belabor it, but I mean, Mr. Superintendent, how do you, I don't understand.
Yeah, it's a.
Fifteen.
It's particularly hard time for everybody and uh. I'm sorry.
It seems like we should have heard about this. It's in the report, but it's just seems like this is a big deal. So. Um, can we get an update on this at the next meeting on what we're doing?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Sure, Mr. Hoey?
Just want to say, uh, in the promotion section, there was two people promoted, excuse me. To um executive sec- secretaries. I hope those are the ones that uh Ms. Desmond's office needs and. Uh, lying this is uh, is that what it is, uh, Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, Dr. Hall, which are, which are the positions that are represented within the report?
Uh, to answer Mr. Hoey, those, the positions uh for the. Engagement office and the office of teaching and learning are uh posted for grade seven.
Thank you. And the last thing, Mayor, uh, I said Lindsay Killaway, her last name is Souza. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, on, on the new hires and promotions, is that a mistake though on one of them?
Dr. Hall?
They're not both executive secretaries, are they?
I'm look, I'm looking at the retirements, um, and in that section and section, uh, Roman numeral one.
Yeah.
I see. I believe ten people, um, and the retirements are dated June thirtieth, June thirtieth, January.
Oh, the new hire pot, like, it says, um. Do we have two sped, two executive secretaries in sped?
Those aren't two level seven um hires. The senior secretary, the senior administrative assistants to the. Those are lower level um executive secretaries, Mayor.
Um, alright. Need a motion or accept the report of progress from eight, one, three, four. As a report of progress by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Um, home, home education report, any questions? No questions on that? Yep, motion approved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seventy-eight approved.
Okay, uh, new business, budget transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The budget transfer uh for this meeting is within your packet. The recommendations approval is written. Ms. Turner's available. Any questions?
Sure, Ms. Turner, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so under the explanation, we have uh IE, painting, carpet, B C, tile. Um, and things like that. Are you sure we can do this? Because I know in the past, we've. We, we haven't been able to and we lose um. The grievances and we're double paying, so.
Right. So just so you know, that transfer of moving the funds is a coding issue to make sure that if we leave everything under seven thousand for capital expenses, it's not part of net to spending. When I moved it over, I took the description from the Department of Ed. Those, that was just to describe that account code forty-three hundred. It's not what we necessarily are planning on, on doing, and that's the type of thing that can be done under that account. And as far as what you said, you're absolutely right. I, I get, um, I believe Dr. Hall is working with people on whether or not we can. Um, proceed with projects. We're not going to do anything without making sure we can. So when we're moving the funds, it's more for quoting to make sure we meet net to spending. And I put that, that description as me just saying it encompasses all these type of costs. It doesn't mean like we might not do the third one in there. It's just a description of what kind of cost go in that account.
Alright, so on the first one, um, athletic supplies and athletic rentals, where are we moving the money from and to?
Okay, so athletic.
The very first one, yeah.
Um, I'm trying to find it.
Okay.
With having my um Zoom thing up now, everything, I can't find anything else. So just give me one minute. Back here. Okay, so you're saying when it comes, low, low, low high school athletic rental is eighteen hundred and fifty dollars? And right beside it, it, that happens to be a one-to-one match. They're putting it in low high school athletic supplies. So they took it out of, um, leftover money from a rental account and they put it over to the supply account. Um, other schools like the LeBlanc, if you see how they're taking thirty-nine hundred from, um, on the right-hand side, you see, and I'm sorry about how it goes. On the right-hand side, this was created by City Hall, but the, I would put the from first so that you could see the from and then the to. But if you look on the right-hand side where it says LeBlanc General Supplies thirty-nine fifty-seven.
Yeah.
If you look back to the left, you'll see LeBlanc, they put it from, they took it from General Supplies and they put twenty-nine fifty-seven. And technology and one thousand in other. That's why it doesn't always line up line to line. And. We take everything they give from the from and the to and we line, um, put it into one sheet. When they send it to us, it all matches up. But because we have so much data to share with you right here, it looks like a big mess to you. But in reality, I can see it because I look at the numbers all the time. Like I said, LeBlanc is an example because it's thirty-nine fifty-seven and it's broken into their two accounts. If you look at the next one, Malloy. Has taken thirty-one hundred dollars from their professional development line and they're putting it in this supply line. The Rogers School, they're doing, they're taking thirty-seven thousand from professional development and putting it in two different accounts. They're putting it in technology and general supply. So like, let's say if they're taking money from one account, if they were only putting it into my, um, one account. Like from one account to the other, then you would have a line-to-line balance here. But because some of the schools are taking money from one account but putting it into two, it makes it start to spread where you don't see a one-to-one um comparison. But do you have any other examples of things that you're curious about? The majority of these uh, um, schools just moving their own money around because. They have to spend it now, the deadlines are here. So they move, if they know that they're not going to do as much P D as they had hoped for due to COVID. They'll move the money to general supplies, you know, and, and do it to buy supplies for next year.
Alright, yeah, it's just, you know, I'd rather the page, I'd rather we add an extra page so things line up. So they're not so messy next time. Um.
Okay, so in other words, like make it where one school is matched up to the other school.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I can do that, but just so you know, there's only going to be a couple of times a year where you see something like this. And that's when we get the schools to do all their cleanup. And then when we do a year-end cleanup, it gets quite messy like that too. What I guess what I'm saying is if I have five thousand dollars that's left over in one account, I might put it into four different accounts. It's not, and then.
I understand that. It's just that. You know, I see a lot of professional develop money that wasn't used. But yet I see other schools like the high school using it for professional development, Sullivan using it for professional development. The uh, daily, so.
Right.
Seems like not consistent with that professional development, so.
Right. They, they, they get to choose um where they want their money. These are their own pockets of money. I, I do know that we thought, um, the, the Sullivan, we thought their original request to move all their money into, um. He, like their professional development account, it looked a little high. We didn't know if they could, you know, use it all at once. So when we talked to the principal, he rearranged it and thought. Like, we, we try to help them along with this.
No, I understand. It just, I don't like the inconsistency in professional development, but that's just me, so. I'm all set. Any other questions on the budget transfer? Um, motion to approve by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Update.
Uh, preschool registration, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Uh, this is the updated policy that uh Committee Member Doherty referenced earlier in the meeting. Ms. Phillips, can you give the, the committee a summary? Recommendation is approval as written. Um, Ms. Phillips, can you give a brief summary?
Sure, I'm, I'm here, school committee members. There's not um much change to what we're proposing to you. Um, with the preschool policy. Typically, um, it's part of the K twelve. School assignment policy, but given that we're still um having discussions around K twelve. Um, we didn't want to hold up the, the pre-K portion. Um, the changes are in red and you'll see that really, um, the, the, the. Only substantive change, I suppose, is just affirming that we're going to continue with online registration um for this upcoming year.
Any questions, Ms. Doherty?
I just have a concern. I know with COVID, we, you know, we moved to this online model. Uh, but I, I'm concerned that for many of our, our newer families. Uh, this presents an additional challenge because you're, you're looking for proof of residency, child's birth certificate, immunization health, health records. Photo ID is all that's supposed to happen online. Uh, I'm just concerned about our families that maybe don't have the technical capacity to do that. And those families. Are the ones we want those children in preschool. They'll lose out on the lottery if they don't meet the deadline. So, um, I, I understand why we, we're moving to this total online. But I'm concerned about the equity in terms of reaching those families whose children we really want to be in preschool. I, I wonder if you had any thoughts on that?
Sure, Ms. Lynn.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
So, um, that was something we closely monitored this year because we did have to enroll everyone that way. Um, we did provide opportunities for um families who needed support. Our, our bilingual family liaisons, our. Um, homeless student liaisons were very um hand-on helping families if they needed. Support with um, with the online platform. But everyone this year did have to submit all of their documentation. Those are the, the usual. Documents required for registration and. Everyone was able to get it done um electronically and we absolutely provided for.
Ms. Mayor?
Sure, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just as a follow-up, because I, I, you know, and again, a lot of these, um. You know, registration in general, obviously, is, is a challenge in the best of times. Um, was there any consideration given to kind of having a, a drop-off option? Particularly around the documentation. I mean, are you accepting photos of documentation or? Okay, because I, I know, and I just say this because I know from our programming, um, you know, we, we basically are open to both. We have a drop-off. In the vest of yule where people are having conversations with staff and then are able to just physically drop off copies of, of documentation. Kind of just to accommodate what, what Ms. Doherty is talking about, to make access as easy and as, as varied as you can. Despite the fact that we're in this crazy situation.
Yes, and, and um, many families did come to the Family Resource Center even during the pandemic and we did serve them. Um, when they came to the, came to the door. Um, so we'll continue to do that. We've also staggered the preschool registration and kindergarten registration start dates. So all of the registration staff will be able to focus um solely on pre-K. Um, for the, the dates that we set, which will likely be, you know, um, three weeks in the month of March. And so then there's um a period of time to, um, you know, to process those applications. And so the lottery actually wouldn't happen until May. So that does give us time to process documents to make sure. Um, you know, everyone has been captured who, who wanted to apply.
Thank you.
If, could I just follow up on that? Sorry. It's just the language says that you must register online. I, I'm just wondering if we want to change that it's preferred that you register online or something that indicates. We can accept families who are unable to register online. We don't want to close the door on our most needy families. Uh, because they don't have the technical capability to get online with all these materials. That, that would be a suggestion that I'd be more comfortable with.
Sure, Ms. Phil?
So I, I, I think it's speaking more so to the online platform. Because again, during the pandemic, families did come um to get supported. And it was still submitted online even if um a liaison helped them to do it. So everything went on online, um, but we did provide that additional support. If you couldn't do it online by yourself, right, um, in your own residence.
I think to, to, again, to Ms. Doherty's point, I think, I mean, this again, this is not our promotional material. This is not the flyer that's going out to, to tell people about how to register because that I'm sure will include like a hotline or, or other ways of connecting. But I do think that um, the, the policy itself, itself should also include a line that accommodations are, are made. For families who need additional hands-on, you know, assistance to access the online portal. Just so we're all clear that we're. Just so we're all clear that we're making that available to parents.
And, and we can add that language and I think that's a reasonable accommodation.
Well, maybe, can you come back to us at the next meeting with, with the all finished up then?
Okay, actually, I would say if we could approve it tonight, uh, my, um, John, cause I'm, I'm sure you guys have a timeframe you're trying to meet. I'd be comfortable making a motion to approve it as presented with the addition of a sentence around access for, um, all parents who may, you know, again, you can word it however you want, you know, access for parents over and above the online option.
And I would second that.
Yep.
Alright. That's what you wanted to do. Yep, um, it's just the grammar isn't even like correct in this, so I wanted to see the finished product, but okay, so roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Can, uh, you read the motion, please? I've been caught in an audio.
Sure. To approve the preschool registration policy revision with the addition of adding access for parents over and above the online access. So you're adding a line that parents will have access beyond online.
We're talking about a simple grammar edit to add in, just assuring people that
That they have another option, I guess, other than online.
Online.
They can, yeah.
That accommodations would be made.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six shades, one day, true.
Uh, School Committee meeting dates. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, uh, just, uh, Ms. Phillips is a previous former English teacher, so I'm sure she always appreciates the, the grammar tutorials. There is a, but, uh, yes, the, the next one we have is the committee meeting dates, the standard approval that the committee has. Uh, the standard template was used typically. What we've done the last couple of years, we've made adjustments as needed. Uh, as the dates come closer, these are the standing dates within the calendar, uh, recommended to the committee. It's in your packet. Recommendations approval as written.
Any question? Motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Howie to approve. Roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
You say yes?
Sure, I guess.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
Uh, we'll talk about it some other time, I guess.
Oh, does he want to?
Oh, did you want a question? I didn't see.
No, my computer's just, yeah, we're just, this is a Zoom meeting. It's ridiculous. I can, I'll, we'll talk later.
Alright. Um, next vote to accept donation from Fred Morel. Um, wish to inform you that Mr. Fred Morel, uh, one forty-one Ludlam Street Lowell, Mass. Wishes to donate fifty large boxes of baseball cards, two hundred, uh, two hundred thousand plus cards pending acceptance by Lowell School Committee for Distribution to middle school students. Um, is it ready? Do we know if these are old or new baseball cards or, do we have any information on this, Mr.? Well, it's worth a lot of money.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting donation. Uh, being a child who grew up through the heyday of baseball card collecting, I was an avid baseball card collector. I have not had a chance to review all of these cards. Uh, it seems like he's making an assessment that they're only worth twenty-five cents a piece. So from that, I would assume they're more modern cards than they are vintage, but nonetheless, we can accept the donation at his appraised value. Um, and if we learn that there's something more valuable, I'll notify the committee. I, I don't personally plan to appraise the cards though, so. I, this is an interesting donation though, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know that I've received one such as this before.
But I mean, what happens if there is a card in there that's, uh, valuable? We get ourselves in trouble. I mean, Mr. Howie will be going through them all. He'll know.
We'll make a weekend of it. I, I think he, he appraised them himself at an average value of twenty-five cents. Uh, that would be the best information we have right now.
Alright, any questions? Uh, motion approved by Mr. Howie, seconded by Mr. Gillen. Roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
She muted.
She doesn't like baseball.
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
Okay, approval of the West End Research Study proposal. Any questions? Uh, roll call.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
Alright, somebody get tech support over to Mr. Dillon's house.
Before we wrap up, Mr. Mayor?
Go on, Ms. Martin?
I just had one, you can call it a point of personal privilege if you like. Um, just during our meeting tonight, I know special ed has come up a number of different times in a number of different ways. I was wondering if we might, next week obviously is out of the question with, I think we're up to three meetings already. Um, but could we, uh, poll the subcommittee, the curriculum, um, subcommittee to see if we could schedule a session to talk about the special ed, get an update on, uh, where we are with the IEPs, the new rules and the, the, um, initial assessments? Um, get any information we may be able to on, uh, um, the staffing questions. Uh, and then if there are any other special ed questions that my colleagues want to kind of lump into that, um, so that we could maybe host a meeting that first week in March, maybe?
Sure. Okay, so motion of, um, poll the committee to, um, arrange a subcommittee on spec by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Alright, any other questions?
If I could just make a comment.
Go.
I, I want to go back to my earlier questions to the superintendent about the, uh, the poll that's going out to families, the survey that we've been talking about. But I know we sent everybody home December eighteenth to remote and our intention was always to get back, get back to the twenty-five percent, get back to higher than that as soon as we could. Um, um, my understanding is that survey, uh, that we've been collecting, that we, we haven't got yet, really only gives parents the choice of remote or in-person. And I don't think that's clear for our families, um, that we want to be able to tell them when we're talking about in-person, it's going to be a hybrid model. Uh, because I, I, I don't want us to have, that's going to be the basis of how we do our staffing decisions, um, what we can do with the, the space for the number of students we can fit, all those things. So we need to go back and make sure that we're clearly communicating with our families, uh, what the options are. I just want to make that clear.
So there were, there was a dropdown, so there's two questions. If, uh, do you plan to remain remote? If you plan to remain remote, then you don't have, you don't go into any more questions. Are you planning for in-person learning? Then there's a dropdown there, uh, that then gives you furthers that parents can answer questions. I believe Dr. Guillory, if I'm recalling the survey instrument correctly, is that how that particular survey instrument worked? We've done continuous surveys of families. So back in December, we were actually surveying families to determine what kind of open seats we would have within the twenty-five percent. We've surveyed those families. That's how we know how we have the open, uh, seat. We've then surveyed families about the seventy-five percent. We've also done the community satisfaction surveys. So our surveys have been extensive and they've actually been, uh, excellent response rates, as you hear, to get over three thousand responses to a first district-wide community satisfaction. Uh, survey is actually a, a pretty good response rate for preliminary review of it. So if the surveys go out, what we'll do and what we do is as we have more information, we continue to share more information. So ultimately, so ultimately, as schools build out, cause they'll have to build out their plans, they will look slightly different at each school. There's, we've given as much information as we can to get back as much information as we can. The high school obviously will look significantly different. That still has to be built out as a specific roster. Middle schools will look slightly different. If you're in a small school versus a large school, a two-round versus a four-round, that's going to be different. Uh, so hybrid itself doesn't give people a lot of information. So what we'll do is we'll get more specifics as we have more specifics and then that information will get out to families. Uh, but this information coming back allows us to take the next step, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We're on track. We're on track.
And I just have to say, as a parent, I definitely, I know you were answering questions, um, that, that really didn't indicate what direction you were going to go in. Uh, so I was, you know, it was about whether I would be interested in sending my student back, even if I couldn't have transportation, for example. So it wasn't telling me, you know, oh, this is what the plan is necessarily. It was still just kind of capturing all of the information that's needed to, to have a plan. So, um, so I wasn't necessarily, as I, as a parent, at least from my experience, I wasn't taking the survey knowing which direction, what the ultimate result was going to be. It was just, um, gathering information from, and, you know, me as a, a parent of a child that is in a remote status currently and has been since the beginning of the year, so.
Oh, thank you. I think it would be helpful maybe if we all had a copy of the survey and maybe when you're ready to report out on it, that would be a good time to include it in our packet, just because I'm, like I said, I'm guessing, I, I didn't see that I had that dropdown carrot because I'm not a parent car- with a student currently in the school.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Motion or adjournment by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Martin. Thank you.
Good work, everybody.
Take care, be well.
Thanks.